Good morning. We will call the April 5th, 2022 City Council Meeting to order. And we have our Russ, Councilman Russ McKelvey lead our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Pray with me, please. Father God, your power was on full display this past week in our community. We are in awe in what you are capable of, but we want to say thank you for protecting our citizens. Thank you for the hard work of the men and women that helped to clean up and keep people safe. We ask your blessings upon them as they continue. And Lord, we ask for special care upon those who are greatly affected with damage to their homes and their property. Lord, make the cleanup quick, make it easy, and heal those hearts of theirs. Today, Lord, we want to say thank you for putting us in this position to do the people's business. Every single one of us here, we thank you for that opportunity. We ask special blessings upon our business that you may give us guidance and give us wisdom to do what is best for all people involved and all people concerned. We love this, this piece of your creation, Jackson, Tennessee, and we want to honor it in our service. Lord, we, we ask you to remind us to, to follow and lead in the spirit of your son, Jesus Christ, the perfect example. And it's in his name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, before we get started, I want to, item four under new business, if you're going to, objections, we'll scratch that from the agenda. We have to go through some other processes to, that should be on the probably May agenda. So, scratch item four under new business. Item three under the agenda's roll call, Sandy, you'll see all council members present with the exception of Councilmember Pickens. Approval of minutes from the March 1st and March 8th, city council meetings, those, those meeting, yeah, minutes were sent out to you all. There being no objections or additions or amendments to the minutes, they'll stand approved as read. We have several proclamations and recognitions, and I'll head down and do the proclamations first.
I can have members of Carl Perkins.
Child abuse prevention center? Where's it going?
Okay.
See, I know there's more yarns, too.
Board members, volunteers, staff, and all the members. Exchange club members.
All right, a proclamation today, the proclamation reads, whereas, oh, there's more people, sorry. We need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes lives, life's path for nearly four million of our nation's children annually. Whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographical boundaries and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future. Whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. Whereas Carl Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse through his parent training, educational programs, and community service activities supports the community in preventing and dealing with child abuse to improve the quality of family life for our children and families. Now therefore, I Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Jackson and urge all citizens to use this time to better understand, recognize, and respond to this grievous problem as the center helps our families to prevent abuse.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and the community. We're real excited this year because this is our 40th anniversary. The center opened in October 4th, 1981. And so, we are extremely excited that we're celebrating that 40th anniversary. And so, City Council, in front of you, got a birthday cake and a couple of things to remind you that it's our 40th anniversary. And I have got something special. I was looking back through the pictures, and as I looked at the pictures, the people that were there for the very first ribbon cutting and opening the center was Mayor Bob Conger. And look who's here today, 40 years later, someone that looks a lot like him, right? But Mayor, I brought you a shirt that says, "40 Years Together: Prevention, Healing, and Hope." And it's because of the city council, y'all have been so supportive of us through programs, activities, everything that we do. We can really count on the city and we appreciate that. And I think one reason the center has been successful these last 40 years is because there's a place at the table for everybody. Not everybody can give lots of money, not everybody can run a marathon, not everybody can do a lot of things that we have going on, but there's a place for everybody. And later in the fall, you're going to hear more about us having a gathering of the community in honor of each one of you who have helped the center be who it is and where it is today. And I think if you didn't get a little piece of birthday cake, that we've got some back there. City Council, looks like you have a long meeting today. You can eat it now, or you can save it because you might need it to stay awake today. But please know how much we appreciate you all and how much we appreciate each and every one of you out there for helping make the center what it is today. God bless you.
All right, next up, if we have representatives from Jackson Central Dispatch, Police Fire 911, Madison County Sheriff's Department, Madison County Fire Department, MedLink EMS, and Tennessee Highway Patrol Division 8, join me up here. It's important we recognize them this month, the work that you all did every day, especially this past week, answering those calls, first responders to dispatch the severe weather. We appreciate you. Come on around both sides. Don't, don't come along the dark area over there now. All right, whereas, every day, 911 Public Safety Telecommunications from the City of Jackson Police Department, City of Jackson Fire Department, Madison County Sheriff's Office, Madison County Fire Department, Jackson MedLink, Tennessee Highway Patrol answer requests for emergency aid from the public with professionalism and compassion. Whereas the efforts of these unseen first responders to answer calls for help, gather information, and assure that appropriate assistance is provided have saved innumerable lives. Whereas the work of these 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators is invaluable and deserves public recognition and appreciation. Whereas the United States Congress designated the second full week in April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week to recognize the high-quality communication services provided by our 911 Public Service Telecommunicators. Whereas Jackson and Madison County hereby honor and commend the 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators for their professionalism, commitment, compassion, and steadfast pursuit of their goal to protect life and property. Now therefore, we Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, and Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through the 16th, 2022, is Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Jackson and Madison County, and urge all citizens to honor them for their diligence and professionalism in keeping our community safe. Thank you. Come on, everybody get a coffee. Okay, okay. Now I gotta step up, Mayor, I got a proclamation. There you go. There you go. Of course you do.
Of course I do. Of course I do. It's gonna, I'm gonna be here a little while. You see before you, the individuals who answer the call, they're always hidden behind the telephone. They're calm in the storm. There is a lot that I can say about these individuals because I've had the privilege to work with them for many, many years, but I think there's somebody else that can probably say something a lot better than I can. And that's Officer Jeff Carson, who happened to go to work for Franklin Police Department in Tennessee. And he wrote a song, and I'd like for you to pay attention to the song and the words because that explains exactly who we are. And it also shows our video of our individuals standing behind us. So if you will pay attention to the screen, I'd appreciate it.
I'm the voice that calms the mother, breathing life into her son. I'm the hand that holds and comforts the old man who just woke up and found his wife a fifty years past, away during the night. I'm the friend who talks the troubled teen out of ending her own life. I sent my brothers to the call from your address, expecting the worst and praying for the best. Who am I? I am the ears that listen. Who am I? I'm the convoy in the night, though unseen I was with you till my brothers all arrived. I'm just someone who does the best I can. That's who I am. I've heard the screams from people who I will never meet, listened to the troubled voices from my officers on scene. Sit here trying not to buckle from the pressure I'm due. Hang up the line, say goodbye when I hear the scene secure. I have cried at the violence of mankind. And I have rejoiced at the miracle of life. Who am I? I am the ears that listen. Who am I? I'm the convoy in the night, though unseen I was with you till my brothers all arrived. I'm just someone who does the best I can. That's who I am.
Franklin Police Department, 911, where's your emergency?
We'll put this up for you.
Charlie 162.
Tuffle 129 is in danger.
Station two.
911, be advised, emergency.
Okay, I'll get my other.
3, emergency fire alarm.
Stand the line, let me get you over to the ambulance.
Bravo 82, Bravo 109.
Stay right there and I'll turn me out there shortly, okay?
Let me get you over to the ambulance dispatch, I'll be starting a fire department.
Who am I? I am the ears that listen. Who am I? I'm the convoy in the night, though unseen I was with you till my brothers all arrived. I'm a mother, father, sister, woman, man. That's who I am. Who I am.
That's who they are. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a, a presentation from the Jackson Arts Council to give us an update.
Good morning, Mayor Conger.
Good morning.
To council members, thank you so much for this opportunity to come out and say thank you. On behalf of the entire Arts Committee or in the Arts Council and our artists and advocates, we appreciate you all for your continued support. Mayor, with your permission, I would like to recognize the supporters this morning. If we, if you are a representative of the arts or an advocate or a former board member, would you please stand? We thank all of our arts leaders and advocates for being present today to show their support for the Arts Council. The arts, the City of Jackson strengthen our economy. The arts add a quality of life for our citizens. The arts actually help us to retain residents. The arts are a beautifier city. The arts drive tourism revenue and dollars to our local businesses. The arts improve student academic performances. The arts actually have a positive impact on mental health. The arts spark creativity and innovation in all of us. The arts are not only important, they're essential. The Jackson Arts Council's mission is to connect and strengthen the arts. This Arts Council is, is an organization in Madison County that is a hub for both resources, funds, and leadership for the local arts community. We provide necessary services to help nurture, strengthen, and grow the arts. It's because of the Jackson City Council and Mayor Conger that you provide critical resources, critical funds, to help us to nurture and grow these services. I want to thank Mayor Conger and the City Council members for your continued support. Without you, we could not provide the services that are so necessary to grow and nurture the arts in our community. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm excited to give you an update about the Jackson Arts Council and our arts organizations. We've had a lot of great, great things happening for the arts in our community. Arts organizations that have received financial support for the Jackson Arts Council in fiscal year 2022 will include Ballet Arts, Inc., the Jackson Symphony, the Jackson Theater Guild, Jackson International Food and Arts Festival, Community Multicultural Art Care Center, Brownsville Arts Council, Lane College, Renaissance on Main, and Rivertime Players. In addition to financial assistance, 50 arts organizations continue to benefit from being part of the Jackson Arts Council's Arts Coalition, a group of arts leaders in the community that meet regularly for personal and professional development sessions and networking events to help support one another and grow the arts in our community. The Jackson Arts Council also continues to provide the Arts Coalition with marketing and communication services to get the word out about their arts events and grow our arts organizations. In fiscal year 2023, the Jackson Arts Council will more than double our annual budget, with the majority of our budget going directly out to support the arts and culture sector in our community. We're honored to have been awarded $150,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts from the American Rescue Plan to be distributed to the arts and culture sector in the southwest region of Tennessee for COVID-19 relief. We know that the arts and culture sector in Tennessee was hit hard by the pandemic. Concerts and performances were canceled, and we all had to get creative to keep the arts supporters engaged. We've made it through, now that we're getting back to some kind of normal, but not without significant difficulty. The Tennessee Arts and Culture economic value was decreased by 18% from 2019 to 2020. In addition, arts and culture employment decreased by 11%. Now is the time for us to collectively gather together and stand firm in support with arts organizations in the City of Jackson. Our arts organizations and artists need our support now more than ever. Not only do the arts beautify our city and increase our collective quality of life, but the nonprofit arts and culture sector generates $4.7 million in economic activity in the City of Jackson alone. So we thank you, Mayor Conger, City Council members, and our community for understanding the importance of the arts in our community and continuing to create opportunities for arts organizations to grow and thrive in Jackson. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council for, for Lizzie and Ted?
We really appreciate all the work that you guys do. You know, arts are a very important part of this community, especially downtown, and it goes, goes very well noticed and appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right, next up, we have a update from our Love Your Block Program.
All right, good morning, Mayor and Council. So I am honored to have with us today Nicola, who represents Cities of Service, who funded us with this grant for this program. And of course, you've seen these lovely faces, Jamison Colbert, who's our Love Your Block Fellow, and Abby Palmer, who's our Love Your Block Vista. We just wanted to give you guys an update on this program since it's been making such an impact in our city already, and of course, since we had Nicola here, and see if you had any questions. As a reminder, Jackson is one of eight cities that was funded across the nation for this program this year. The main objectives of the program are to work with residents to reduce blight and improve neighborhoods. We are specifically focusing in the East Jackson area this first year, and we'll look to expand into the core part of the city maybe in the second year. And then based on resident surveys and different discussions that we've had, we'll be focused on volunteer-led projects around vacant lot cleanup and revitalization, small home repairs, and general litter cleanup. So we'll be doing that through coordinating resources, giving mini grants, and again, mobilizing volunteers to make some changes in our community. So, to date, they've already, as I said, hit the ground running. They've had two community meetings, one which they worked with Councilwoman Skinner for the District Four meeting, and we had a meet and greet a few weeks ago at Martin's. Last night, they had a wonderful turnout at TR Wyatt, where they had an application assistance workshop, and they had other service providers providing resources. They've done community cleanup, they've sent out surveys, and of course, they've been speaking at different events and things like that. So where we are now is we'll be releasing the application for residents to apply for assistance for projects here in the next week or so, and we'll start implementing those projects later this spring, throughout the summer, and then we'll do some planning for year two later in the year. But just wanted to give you an update of where we're at and say that this program has been transformative in building relationships in our neighborhoods, and we thank you for your support. Any questions?
What, what kind of, what kind of feedback are you getting? I know that's preliminary. You've had two meetings and then had some survey work done. What, what kind of information are you seeing, and what direction do you see the program going?
Sure, so we're getting really great feedback so far. At every meeting, we've been getting more momentum with residents, and last night, the feedback that we got was basically that they're just really happy to finally be seen and to finally have someone coming into the neighborhood saying, "What do you want, and how can we help you?" So they're very excited.
And I'll just piggyback on that, as we've talked about previously, we're using this process to sort of inform how we look at our larger investments with our ARPA dollars, and we want to not make any quick decisions on that, so that's why we're trying to have as many meetings and engagements as possible. And we've definitely seen a need for larger home repairs, so that's something that may be coming back in front of you guys soon as we figure out what exactly that looks like.
Any other questions from council?
Also appreciate, I saw y'all's work cleaning up the neighborhood, picking up sticks and everything.
They were, they were using chainsaws and cutting up trees.
From office work to, to manual labor.
Multi-syllanted, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right, item six, invitation for public comment. Any item under first reading, ordinance under first reading, we invite the public comment. We have a couple for second reading, too, today. We recognize those at those, that time, and if you want to speak in favor of our opposition too, you can be recognized at that time. Get to first reading. Item one is consideration of an ordinance to close an alley between West Main Street, West Alley, West Lafayette, and North Shannon Street.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this alley closure. It is requested by the property owner that abjoints this alley, and they have property on both sides of it, so they're asking to close this so they can consolidate property. It was presented to the planning commission, and they are recommending approval of it to you.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition too can be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
In the interest of full disclosure, I work with a downtown organization that's developed the property across, across the other piece of property that abuts it. I'd just like to make that, no, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
David, I'm confirming that you're abstaining.
David's, David went to his restaurant, I think.
All right, motion pass, seven zero.
Item two is a proposed budget amendment for Jackson Fire Department insurance recovery in the amount of $17,995.35.
Morning.
Good morning.
This would be reimbursement from the insurance company for damage to a fire apparatus, I believe it was back in mid-December. Just allow us to move forward with preparing.
All right, any questions for, from council? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition too, be recognized. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, seven zero one.
All right. Item three is a proposed budget amendment for professional services for Great Wolf Lodge, amount of $300,000.
Yes, so, design work for the road that will go to the Great Wolf Lodge, that design work has started. We anticipate that we'll expend this fiscal year up to $300,000 to fund that design work, and that would be appropriated from this budget amendment and would come from fund balance, capital outlay fund balance.
Any questions from council on that? This is an item on first reading, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of our opposition too, be recognized. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
In the interest of full disclosure, we have, my family has property at the same exit. Just like to make that none.
Thank you, Councilman.
One more, I've, I've tried to get direction from the city attorney on this. I just feel like this is a proper way until city attorney gives me direction.
Yeah, no, I agree, thank you. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass, seven zero one.
All right, item four is a proposed budget amendment for American Rescue Plan for the Civic Center in the amount of $44,000.
Council previously approved a spin resolution related to the American Rescue Plan Act funding that grouped the proposed spending in different categories. In addition, the council previously approved a budget amendment to recognize the funding and appropriate the expenditures, and that budget amendment created a new fund here at the city specific to the ARPA funds, and the projects were actually budgeted within that fund at the project detail level. So now we're a couple of two or three months post those approvals, and we have begun to approve the actual disbursements of some of those funds. As we discussed, when that original spin resolution, budget amendment was passed, it would be likely, probable that some of the, that those were cost estimates at that time. And when some of the projects came to fruition, they actually cost less than what the budget amendment called for. In addition, there had been some substitutions of certain projects that, once we got into it, would determine we had higher priorities. So this particular amendment at the Civic Center, and then also, I guess, amendment number five, which you'll consider here in a second, as well as number nine and 10, all of these amendments reflect that activity. So really, it's just re-appropriating from one project to another or adding a project that's, where there were funds left over from what was previously approved, and this is consistent, it stays within the
But, I think, yeah, just real quick, these are all projects that, the original projects you all approved, they came in, the departments came in under budget on with the projections, and so they're utilizing, and you all approved a line item spend for each project, so they're requesting that the remainder of the approval of the dollar amount in their spend items go to these without, because they came in under, so.
And Mayor, isn't some of these adjustments due to our conversations with the departments when they came in for their budget meetings as well?
Some of them, some of them are that they got the, they got the projects in well under what they projected, and so they're just asking to use the remainder of what we allocated for them for another project. So, and we take that off of our capital budget that we were doing and put it over here because, so we're not using those capital funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, in a roundabout way, yes.
And this is reflected in the spreadsheet that was sent out last week?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
No?
No. I think you have to prove it before we put it in the spreadsheet.
Okay.
It's based on the POs that were issued.
But it will be reflected in the next one's spreadsheet.
Once the POs are issued, they're in, and put in the spreadsheet, so you all approved this prior to the PO being issued.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Any other questions from Council?
Mayor, I see it's two different projects for the Civic Center. That's two different.
Yeah, two different projects, yes. So, you had to approve each one of those individually since we're line item approving them.
Okay.
So, is there a motion? I'm sorry. These are internal budget amendments. They're not going for an ordinance change, so these don't require a first and second readings. They would just be one reading, and so therefore, there's no public comment there. So, there a motion for this Item Four amendment?
So moved. Second.
And a motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
Item five is proposed budget amendment for American Rescue Plan Act for the garage in the amount of $35,000.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
Item five is proposed budget amendment for American Rescue Plan Act for the garage in the amount of $35,000.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
All right. Then, Item Six is proposed budget amendment for parks, for recreation and parks salary adjustments in the amount of $61,348.86.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We've got to do two readings on this, so this does require a public comment. So, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition, too, can be recognized. Bobby White, Mr. Morris, come up. You want to talk about what these adjustments are? Real quick, before.
Speaking about the adjustments, I think, good morning, Council. I think when Mr. Taylor proposed to have a reading in detail what it was in these spendings, I think the Council agreed to that. When you start doing projects, I worked construction the last 15 years. When you start doing a project.
Mr. Moore, I want to stop you. This is, this item is not about American Rescue Plan. This is about recreation and parks. This is a regular budget amendment.
I'm sorry, budget.
Yeah, this is, this is a budget amendment about recreation and park salaries.
There's no public comment on the last, about the.
No, just say it was an internal budget amendment that was disclosed to Council prior to, and so there's no two readings. It's not an ordinance change, so there's no public comment.
Listen, Scott, I think it says first reading. When you say it first.
And you understand that these are also my rules of the meeting. It's not yours, okay? This is a public comment for an ordinance change based on Tennessee law and our charter. There is no second reading. There is no ordinance change, so there is no public comment. I just disclosed that a second ago. So, if you want to talk about the recreation and park salaries, you can, you can do that.
Well, I'll talk about the recreation of park salary. I think it is deserved. Those hard-working men, I think it is deserved, and the hard-working person in this city deserves everything, because this city is a darn good city to work in, and they work hard.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I have no problem with the men and women who work in this city. It's just that.
All right. Thank you.
Y'all have a blessed day.
All right. Any additional public comment? All right. I'll close the public reading. We have a motion is second. Any further discussion?
Yes. Just for clarification purposes, Mr. Arnold, these, this came before the Budget Committee. We looked at it. As we look at how we're adjusting our salaries for all city employees that's coming up here in the future, some of these temporary employees that serve our camps and other summer activities, we've had to look at those kind of here in the present. This would adjust them to the market rate for, for those temporary employees. Right now, we've been paying them under market rate last year, so this brings them up to market rate. One comment, though, Mr. Arnold, is this a draw on our fund balance?
It is.
One suggestion and recommendation is that, as we continue to draw on our fund balance this year and then into next fiscal year, if we could get a running tabulation on where our fund balance is throughout the fiscal year, I think that would be helpful to the Council.
We have that information. Of course, we would be tracking it from a budget standpoint with what you're speaking to now, but we have a schedule where we do that, and I can certainly bring that.
If, for instance, if we have a draw on our fund balance in any particular meeting, if that could be accompanied by what those potential draws would be, it'd be helpful.
We can do that.
All right. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
All right. Item number seven is proposed budget amendment for engineering in the amount of $99,200.
Sure, there's a, and Mr. Wolf may be here if you have any specific questions, but there is a storm sewer repair project over on West Forest Avenue at Medical Center Drive that needs to be repaired, and we would be, this would be the city portion of that, that total project cost. The balance of it would be funded by the healthcare system, and this would be a budget amendment in the capital outlay fund, and we would be reallocating budgeted funds from street resurfacing to this particular project, so it would be budget neutral, so.
Again, Council, this is an internal budget amendment moving in the same fund, so it doesn't require two readings. So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions from Mr. Wolf?
I'm sorry, who was the motion?
Councilman Dodd. Any questions from Mr. Wolf or comments from Council? All right. Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
All right. Item eight is proposed budget amendment for engineering in the amount of $112,750.
I understand there are 41 traffic signal loop detectors at 12 different intersections here in the city that need some type of repair or maintenance or update, and the cost of that would be $112,750. This also would reallocate budgeted funds from the street resurfacing line to this particular project, so it would be budget neutral, so.
All right. Any questions from Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Wolf, I appreciate your department's interest in getting to the bottom of this and looking into this. I know it took some time. I had some constituents reach out concerned about the timing on these lights, and Mr. Wolf did a great job tackling this problem.
Thank you. It was the staff that, it was the staff that did it, but thank you for the compliment. I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a good question.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, I also really appreciate everything that you're doing. Any of the remainder of the money that's used for the traffic lights, what roads are the roads that didn't get resurfaced? Is there anything that should be talked about in that area?
We do have, we're working on the list now. The list is pretty much set, but we have, it has to come to Council next meeting. The contractor is going back into the state specs for the state of Tennessee. There's a bituminous index number that is in that specification that will be coming before you next month. They, they take a look at what that index number was back when they bid the job and what it is current based on oil prices, and then that increases that specific unit, unit in the bids. There's four items which are all related to asphaltic material that account for 70% of the project, so, but that will be coming forward. Once that comes in, we still have some other projects that we're going to do. I believe, even with this transfer, we're still going to have between $500,000 and $700,000 remaining, and if, as we go through, if we have a need to do additional streets or if we can swing into additional streets, if the money isn't called for somewhere else, we'll continue to try to add to the program.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure we're really staying on top of our roads. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a motion is second for that, I read. No. Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
Item nine is proposed budget amendment, American Rescue Plan for the ned in the amount of $22,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote. And proposed budget amendment for American Rescue.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
Sorry. Item ten, proposed budget amendment. Long meeting, I'm trying to get through. American Rescue Plan Civic Center in the amount of $34,996.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Tara.
Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
All right. Move on to second reading. Thank you, Bobby. Item one is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 13, at the 1384 block of Ashport Road from RG2, General Residential District, and RS2, Single Family Residential District to RG3, General Residential District comprising 13.76 acres more or less, and we'll have a public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
This is a public hearing for this item for the notification purposes. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition, too, can be recognized. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Have a motion is second. Any further discussion?
In the interest of full disclosure, I'm in the process of developing multifamily residence. I voted on this. I think it's a great addition to our community. Until I can receive some direction from the city attorney, I'll abstain.
Thanks, Councilman. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Seven, zero, one. Abstain.
Item two is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at Herengrove Road, Wiley Street, South Creek Drive, from SC1FH Plan Commercial Flood Hazard District to RS1 FH Single Family Residential Flood Hazard District to B5 FH Highway Business Flood Hazard District comprising 10.63 acres more or less. Any questions from Council? We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition, too, can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
Item three is consideration to rezone property located at 1405 Hollywood Drive from OC Office Central District to SC1 Plan Commercial District comprising 1.08 acres more or less. Any questions from Council? All right. We're going to have the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition, too, can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? Councilman Dodd, second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of full disclosure, I'd like to, we also are developing, as I stated, a multifamily project. This is around the corner from my house. I voted in the affirmative for it at the last meeting. I think it's a great addition to the community.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Seven, zero, one. Abstain.
Item four is consideration, consideration of an ordinance to close a portion of Southwest Alley from Sycamore Street to Highway 45 bypass. Any questions from Council? We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition, too, can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Eight, zero.
All right. Item five is consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon the northern end of Fireglass Road from Lower Brownsville Road to a point 3,280 feet south. This item was passed on first hearing, and we need to have a public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of full disclosure, we have property at this exit.
Thank you for giving me time to take a drink of water. All right. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Seven, zero, one. Abstain.
Item six, consideration of an ordinance to reapportion the nine council districts of the city of Jackson.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass. Six to one. No.
All right. Move on to new business. Have a report from Malden Jenkins, auditor, discussion, and analysis of our FY21 audit. Yeah. Are they going to be on the screen?
Yeah, I think we got it.
Yeah, so you're going to come up. Bobby just can case there's questions for you, and we can have them report as well. Anyone tell them who's going to be on the screen.
Can we introduce? James?
I think we're muted at present.
Unmuted.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. If I could, Council and Mr. Benz, let me introduce James Benz from our audit firm, Malden and Jenkins. Mr. Benz was able to be present, I guess it was last week, at the Audit Committee to present this information on our FY21 audit. He had a conflict today, but he's been gracious enough to join us virtually to take us through this report.
This conference will now be recorded.
If I could, counsel and Mr. Benz, let me introduce James Benz from our audit firm, Malden and Jenkins. Mr. Benz was able to be present, I guess it was last week, at the audit committee to present this information on our FY twenty-one audit. He had a conflict today, but he's been gracious enough to join us virtually, to take us through this report.
This conference will now be recorded.
And let me just say, before he gets started, from a first-of-street point and a representative of the city, this was Malden and Jenkins' first year to do our audit. That's a significant transition for the audit firm themselves, as well as the city. And I want to recognize Mr. Benz, as well as the members of his team that conducted our audit. They were very thorough and very professional in their work, and we appreciate that very much, so. So, James, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Good morning, mayor, members of the council. My name is James Benz. I am partnered with Malden and Jenkins, and I'm going to share a screen with you now. Doesn't look like it's come through on the Facebook page, but can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, I've got our presentation I'm gonna go through again. This is the results of your June thirty, twenty twenty-one audit. And I'm not gonna hit every page in here, but I'm gonna go through the highlights. And certainly, if there are any questions, please feel free to interrupt, and I will attempt to answer the questions for you all. To start with, as Mr. Arnold mentioned, this is our first year with, working with the city, so we always like to give a little background of who we are. Malden Jenkins is a regional firm. We have twelve offices in five states, and we do work with about five hundred and sixty local governments throughout the southeast. We have eleven partners, myself included, who work with local governments year-round, and it's certainly an industry we're very committed to. I served as the engagement partner. I've been with Malden and Jenkins for eighteen years, working with local governments all eighteen years. And all of our audits have two-partner involvement. We have what we call a quality control partner, who is independent of the audit team, and reviews the file at the end of the audit to ensure that we've, we've applied all appropriate accounting standards and followed all guidance. And so Meredith Litten served in that role for us. She was our quality control reviewer, and she's been with Malden and Jenkins now for twenty-nine years. At a very high level, we do, you know, it's just to kinda summarize what an audit is for those who may be not too familiar with it. We do conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as governmental auditing standards. And what that means is our objective is to issue an opinion as to whether or not your financial statements are materially correct as presented. And so it does not give absolute assurance. We are not testing every transaction, but we are issuing our opinion on the presentation of the city's financial statements. And so, to that end, our audit contract did not include the audit of the Jackson Energy Authority, the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency, or Jackson Transit Authority. All three of those entities have their own audit contract, to which our opinion, as it relates to their information, is based on the opinion of their independent auditors. And so we do wait, we do need their other opinions in order to conclude on your financial statements. For the June thirty, twenty twenty-one audit, we did issue an unmodified opinion. Our report date was March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. The unmodified opinion means that the financial statements were materially correct as presented by management. Along with your financial statement audit, we also conducted a single audit, which is the audit of your federal expenditures. So anytime you have federal expenditures exceeding seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, you're required to have an audit on those expenditures. And so we conducted our risk-based assessment and followed the uniform guidance in determining which programs to audit. And we tested two major programs, being the Community Development Lot Grant Program and the Coronavirus Relief Fund Programs, as part of the twenty twenty-one audit. Both received no instances of noncompliance and no material weaknesses, so a clean opinion and clean report for those. Through the audit process, one of the things we do review, it is in our opinion, but it doesn't always jump out, is we do review management estimates or judgments used in the financial statements. I review both for compliance with accounting standards, as well as industry norms. And so we did not have anything unusual or out of industry norm in evaluating the estimates and judgments used. I'm gonna go to page seven, and just say that, again, to point out our independence in the audit presentation. The financial statements are the responsibility of management, and as your external auditors, it's our responsibility to audit that information. So we are independent, and we are an external audit firm from the city, so. Then off to slide eight. One of the things that we try to do is take a high-level financial review to see how your year concluded. And what you have here is a trend slide of your general fund's fund balance. So when someone's looking at the health of a city or a county, the general fund's typically where they're going to look to see how the city wrapped up the year. And so what we've got here is your unassigned fund balance, being the largest portion of your bar graphs. That's the portion of your fund balance that's available for you to use in future years. And you can see, this last year, twenty twenty-one, we had a good addition to fund balance, adding about ten million dollars over the last several years in total. Your way you evaluate where our fund balance lands is you wanna look at the unassigned fund balance as it's compared to the total annual expenditures of your general fund. And you'll see in here, we ended the year, about thirty-eight point eight percent of our annual expenditures are available in our fund balance. Historically, we've kind of been around the twenty to twenty-eight percent range. GFWA, which is a National Finance Officers Association, they recommend that you have about three to four months in fund balance. And so you'll see where we're sitting now is in a good position compared to that, that, that benchmark that they've set out there. On slide nine, kinda what we call the thirty thousand feet airplane view. We're gonna look at your budget for the year for the general fund, and of course, this is not a line item review, this is in total. And so you've got several columns here. We've got the original appropriation set by the council to start the fiscal year, where we anticipated using about three point seven million of our fund balance. And then throughout the year, we made amendments to conclude the year with our final approved budget being about seventy-two million in revenues, and utilizing about five million dollars in fund balance. Then you see your actual column, which is the actual results for the general fund for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one. We actually had revenues come in at about a hundred and eleven percent of our final appropriation or anticipation for the revenues, and we ended up adding eight million dollars to fund balance. And you'll see here some of the highlights of where those differences come in. Our expenditures came in about ninety-four percent of budget. The main drivers in those throughout the departments was mainly through salaries being lower than budgeted and maintenance costs being lower than. Another trend analysis of your general fund, looking at some of your significant revenues. Your primary revenues for your general fund are predominantly property taxes, sitting at about thirty-one and a half percent of your revenues. And then your internal revenues being a sales tax for grant accounting for about another forty-three percent, forty-five percent of your revenues. You'll see here the trend over the past couple of years, the black bar being our local sales tax, very consistent with other local governments throughout the state. Sales tax would have a pretty decent spike this year, mostly attributed to just folks getting back out and really being comfortable spending again. But it's pretty consistent. Going to slide eleven, we're looking at cash flow statements here, so a quick analysis of your proprietary funds. They function a little bit different than the, than the general fund, so typically, you'll look at the cash flows for those. Of the particular types of proprietary funds you have, your, your main proprietary fund is your Jackson Transit Authority. Again, this is an institute that we did not audit, so the information comes from their audit statements. But it's very, very typical for a transit system. So you'll see when you look at cash flows from operations, it actually operates at about a negative three point three million dollar loss from operations. And that's, again, very typical, because we're not charging the riders of this program the full cost of operations. We're very heavily dependent on federal funding. And so you'll see that next section down there, we've got about two point nine million coming from city appropriations and federal funding appropriations. Going into slide twelve, there's a couple of slides in here. Just kinda preface that, through the audit process, the, the audit standards do require that anytime there is a proposed adjustment by the audit team, that those adjustments be evaluated. And if they're material to the reporting funds, that those end up being reported as material weaknesses. So we have several material weaknesses as part of this year's audit. However, I do, when I can, like to preface that the majority of these journal entries deal with year-end reporting of activities and sort of the period recognition in which they're being accounted for. Being that, for instance, in this one item here, our adjustments related to the city's revenue recognition deals with items that are recorded, but they're being recognized in the wrong fiscal years. And so these deal with adjustments changing the period in which they're being recognized and not necessarily unrecorded activity. And so we did have a few adjustments here dealing with revenue recognition. Again, we've got some items dealing with when the period of the adjust, of the revenue is being recognized. In accordance with GASB thirty-three for non-exchange transactions, we have to evaluate the period of availability and making sure that items collected within a certain amount of period, a certain amount of days after fiscal year-end are recognized in twenty twenty-one versus twenty twenty-two. For slide thirteen, we had adjustments dealing with the expense and expenditure recognition. The biggest one here is the second bullet on the expenditure tax section. We did have a liability that was brought to our attention by management as not being previously reported, and it deal, deals with our portion of the sales tax, which we have an agreement in place to allocate and set aside for the education foundation. And so that item was about eight hundred and twenty-one thousand being recorded into the books this year, with about three hundred and twenty-one of it related to sales tax collections from the prior year. The second section on here deals with capital asset accounting. This has been something that Mr. Arnold and his team have been working to kinda really bring up to speed to where the city can maintain good records on this. And my understanding is we're now working with our new accounting software to really utilize the, the software programs to bring these in-house. However, historically, these, the city's capital assets have been maintained in numerous Microsoft Excel files, and those were aggregated and brought into a system this year. And we had a few adjustments as it relates to that, including some projects which were being reported as still in progress at about eight point three million, which then needed to be reclassified to depreciable categories. Again, assets that were in the system, but from an accounting standpoint, were kinda in the wrong bucket, if you will. On the general ledger maintenance, this is another one where we had some of the sub-ledger accounts historically not being updated. And so with the city's tax digest, we had the twenty twenty-one digest, which is reported in your general fund and your debt service fund. There were adjustments to update the prior year numbers for the twenty twenty-one digest balances. And then slide fifteen is the investigative report, which the Comptroller's Office released during twenty twenty-one. The audit manual from the Comptroller's Office does require us to include the finding, although it's been presented to the people in previous meetings. So these items are all repeat items. Again, it's just the inclusion of their results from the investigative report are required to be as part of your audit. And then we had one item that we consider a significant deficiency. We've, we've met with management, we've met with the audit committee, and we've kinda talked through some of these scenarios. Unfortunately, right now, with the size of the city's accounting staff, you do have a segregation of duties concern, where your accounting team does have access and rights to all phase of the accounting process. And so we're not able to currently segregate those duties. And so what we're going to be working on is trying to implement ways to, to implement compensating controls to help prevent errors or misstatements due to the size of the accounting staff. And there'll be efforts that management's working on. I believe there's a new employee coming in this month, and so there'll be efforts to kinda help segregate some of these responsibilities as well, so we can kinda limit the access to the full transaction cycle. But as long as the individuals do have access and the ability to, to access all phases of a transaction cycle, we do have some segregation duty concerns. Page seventeen, I won't really touch too much on these. These are kinda what we call our management letter comments. We went through all these with the audit committee. These are items where we see room for improvement and opportunities to improve the processes throughout the city. We've met with management, we've met with the audit committee to go over these in detail, and a lot of these are already implemented and working on from the city's management standpoint to correct and address. I'll flip to page, slide nineteen. Starting on slide nineteen, we've got a couple of slides here. These are, you know, if you have trouble sleeping at night, I like to say these are the nighttime sleep reading. These are all the new accounting statements that are coming out in the next several years. And so we've got GASB eighty-seven, which comes out and is applicable for fiscal year twenty-two, which changes the reporting of any lease. And so historically, we've evaluated our, our leases for whether or not they were capital operating leases. And capital leases became part of your financial records, and operating leases historically have been disclosures in your footnotes. Now, under GASB statement number eighty-seven, all long-term commitments, where you have a commitment to use another entity's assets, and we have a payment that's going to extend beyond twelve months, will now be reflected on your books. And so this will be a big change for all local governments. Management's currently working on this, and we've offered several training classes on, on the accounting for this. And so hopefully, this will be an easy implementation for the city, but it is going to be a big undertaking. Excuse me. With that, the last thing I'll touch on is slide twenty-four. As part of our, one of, one of the items we do for our clients, as part of our value add for our clients, is we do offer electronic newsletters, as well as virtual continuing education classes. The way we do that is through an email signup, and so it's open to all of management, as well as governance, at the, at all of our clients. And so if you're interested and would like to be a part of receiving some of these newsletters or the continuing education registrations, my email, as well as our CPE Coordinator Paige Urco, is in this slide. Please feel free to reach out, and we'll be happy to sign you up so that you have access to those opportunities as well. With that, that's the end of the presentation. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council regarding the FY twenty-one audit?
Quick question. Overall, if you could grade our audit, what would you give us?
The, your financial statements or the audit process?
The whole process.
You're, you're on par with a, with a transition audit. You know, we, we were wrapped up pretty good. We had some issues, as you saw, in the, in the material weaknesses. You know, I think we ended up with five material weaknesses for this year's audit. None of them are items which I look at and see any concern with them being corrected. You know, it's a lot of things that I think historically the city has relied, has not taken in-house. And as part, you know, we've met with them, and I honestly don't see any of these, other than the segregation of duties, which I would expect to be repeats, or would have concerns, would still be a lingering issue. And so with any transition audit, you've got a new set of eyes. Every audit firm evaluates risk assessments and their audit approach differently. And again, we, we had some journal entries. We also had some component unit issues, which we needed to get information for. But I would say going forward, we're very optimistic that this will be a very smooth process.
Thank you. Are any additional questions from council?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Benz for his time sharing this with us at the Audit Committee. The Budget and Audit Committee will continue to monitor these, these weaknesses and, and make sure that management has a plan moving forward. I think we already started on that. And so we'll monitor that plan, along with the Internal Auditor's Office, to do our best to not have a repeat finding next year.
Maybe give us, maybe we can get, start getting monthly reports sent from the Budget Committee, would help us also stay track on that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to accept the audit?
Some move.
A motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass eight zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Benz.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Item two, in our new business, consideration of street acceptance for Old Madonna Road Associates, phase two, lots three through six. Get lost in the yard, huh?
As you are aware, the process, once improvements are, are made and, and they get to the last stage, this is the acceptance by you. So all things have been done to, to prepare this part of street and stub to meet our requirements, and we are recommending that you accept it now.
All right. Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Have a motion, there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion pass eight zero.
Item three is consideration of a proposal for the triangle, proposal for the property located at the intersection of West Lafayette Street and West Main Street.
The, the mayor had asked the CRA, as we did with the Rockabilly Museum and property, for the CRA to sort of vet this process, because the CRA is your redevelopment arm and kind of responsible for redevelopment efforts. So the CRA put out a public notice, we ran that notice for a month, asking for proposals on this triangle piece of property. And in that timeframe, we received one proposal, and that's the proposal you have before you. The CRA is recommending that proposal to you, but they recommend and, and that we treat this as a first step, because it is, you know, there's a lot of details and development agreements that have to be worked through before we transfer the property. But as a first step, it's much like we do in the CRA. You approve a project in concept, and then from there, we go, go into the due diligence and all the development agreements and, and factors that we need to have information on before we transfer the property. So again, the CRA recommended this proposal to you, but again, with, as this being the first step.
Any questions from council?
Stan, what, what types of things is the CRA looking to put into place as we move, potentially move forward with this?
Well, the typical things are, you want the ability to have a reversion clause. If, if, for instance, the developers don't go forward with the project, you have the ability to pull the property back. There's also a need for some performance thresholds, so that you hold the developer accountable. And, and we don't force them to do things that are reckless, but we ask them to give us some progress. So we give them performance benchmarks, and then they, they go forward with those benchmarks. We also are looking for a development plan. Right now, we know the proposed use is a hotel, but we really don't know what shape that's gonna take, so we wanna see more in the way of development plans. Also, there are some other due diligence things like design review that they must pass through the Planning Commission for when they get the final development plan together. There's also some restricted covenants that we may want to attach to the property to guide it over time because it's been cities' experience, our city with the downtowner and other cities with other hotel projects, that sometimes the brands change over time, and sometimes the standard of maintenance drops, and then you end up with a negative use instead of something that's positive in an asset. So, we want to explore ways to be in the project so as we guide it forward, so that there is a standard of maintenance, there is, the project is up kept, and it becomes an asset and continues to be an asset. So, those are just some of the things we'll be looking for.
So, Stan, are you asking us to make a commitment today to Skyland Hospitality Development?
I think everyone is comfortable with a hotel project. Everyone is enthused about a hotel project being in the downtown area. There's just some more details that need to be worked out. So, what you would be doing is approving it in concept, then we would start the process of getting those details worked out. And once those details are worked out, then they'll go through the design review process, and there will also be a development agreement between the city and the developer that'll say, you know, you do these things in this timeframe, and also, you deliver these things as you set forth. And so, again, I think everybody's comfortable with it being approval of a hotel project in concept, but there's still a lot of due diligence that needs to be done.
When you say everyone, you mean the CRA?
The CRA is-
And the planning department.
And most people that are aware of the project have said it's great to have someone be looking at a hotel downtown.
Thank you.
In the interest of full disclosure, I've developed hotels before, but I do think this would be an excellent addition to downtown. I think it's something that, as a former chair of JDDC, and it's something that we've wanted for a long time and we've needed. So, I would put my vote of confidence in this.
Are any additional questions from council? We have a motion to accept the concept to enter into the development agreement?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item, Councilmember, item four, struck from the agenda. Item five is consideration professional services for the Jackson Bicentennial Park. And that is professional services with TLM that we've entered into to develop the, help the bicentennial community develop the park. Goes along with our redesign of airways in Lafayette Street, and so, you have the agreement in front of you, professional services.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
One question, looking through this, it looks like there's a cap of fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Do we anticipate getting close to that for a retaining wall? And some grading?
I don't believe so. I'm not for sure. They put the cap on there just to protect us in case, you know, construction costs and not knowing what the cost of being a few months.
Well, so, just so I'm clear on this, this isn't, this is just for the design, or is this for the design and construction?
This is for the design.
Okay. So, I guess construction costs wouldn't change for us. We're just looking at fifty thousand seems very steep for-
I don't think we'll get close to that. That's just a boilerplate cap they put in there.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? And this is to ensure that we can place the time capsule. So, that's very important. The bicentennial committee's been working very hard to make sure that happens. So, that is to retaining wall, to, I would say, resurface the area. So, I think it is good that we just have that extra in case we don't know prices. So, I'm in favor of moving forward with that because the bicentennial is committed to making this happen.
We already have a motion, sir? No. We have a motion and a second already?
Dodd and Wallace.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Not helping me out at all, Ross.
Ernest, are you abstaining? Okay. Motion passed eight zero.
Item six, consideration of City of Jackson and Jackson Police Department Equipment Supply Donation Agreement. Captain Benton, good morning.
Morning, Council.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Captain Benton, Jackson Police Department. We have some expired SWAT equipment, some soft vests, some hard plates, and some helmets that are expired now. And the Interlocal Cooperative Act allows local government agencies to donate equipment from one agency to another, and we would like to do that with the Bolivar Police Department. They have a need for it, and instead of selling it to the civilian market, we'd rather donate that to our brothers in blue, with approval of council, of course.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ernest, step down.
Do you need to reset the vote?
Could someone reset? Councilmember Brooks is-
So, do I count him as abstained or as yes?
Just count him as not present.
Not present?
Yeah.
Motion passed seven zero, one abstained.
All right. Item seven is consideration of a resolution to designate an arts district for the City of Jackson. We have representatives from Arts Council and our Public Arts Commission, questions on the arts district.
Could you guys just kind of run us through, we've been given the map and the resolution, but could you kind of run us through the purpose of this district?
So, by creating an arts district in our downtown, the heart of our community, we're saying that we value creative placemaking. So, what we're doing is ingraining the arts into a particular designated area of the City of Jackson. We know from this happening in other areas of our country that creative placemaking and creating an arts district like this will strengthen our community by increasing tourism in the downtown area, beautifying our city, driving traffic to local businesses, strengthening our local economy, bringing new attention to key community assets, issues, voices of residents, local history and cultural infrastructure in the area, injecting new energy, resources, activity, people, and enthusiasm into the area, allowing our residents to envision new possibilities for community or place, connecting people, places, economic opportunity through physical spaces and new relationships, and bringing a sense of humanity and unity into the heart of our city. Very important.
And also, the district will help beautify the outdoor and indoor spaces, and it will complement businesses, enhance property values, of course, increase the tax base, create creative and fun environment. And, you know, of course, it will attract tourists, and it will help revitalize neighborhoods. That's what I'm really excited about, and increase the quality of life for the residents around the neighborhood. And it will also serve as a vehicle to assist in the support of the marketing of local nonprofits and cultural organizations within the boundaries and also outside the boundaries. And also, we worked on this and expanded it looking at future businesses and galleries and art ventures, expanding north, south, east, and west.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. And is any additional questions from council?
This will really be a good vehicle for you guys to be able to get grant funding potentially and other types of revenue to put into the arts and continue your mission. Is that correct? Okay.
Move to approve. Have a motion, there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item eight is consideration of a contract with Mid-South Solutions for Jackson Fire Department uniforms.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Stuff in a row here. I'll try to be brief. I got a couple of items coming up. This bid was for Jackson Fire Department uniform items. We had two vendors submit for this. We recommend awarding this to Mid-South Solutions as the best bid received, and the breakdown of the individual unit items will be in your packet.
Move the approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
This is the current vendor we're using, is that correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item nine is consideration of the Voya Financial Deferred Compensation Contract.
On December third, twenty nineteen, City Council approved the implementation and administration of the Internal Revenue Code four fifty-seven deferred comp plan for the City of Jackson employees with Voya Financial. Their fixed rate was three point two five until June thirtieth, twenty twenty, three percent till twenty twenty-one, two point five percent till twenty twenty-two, and the guaranteed floor is one percent. Because the guaranteed floor is one percent, it's set to take place on July first, twenty twenty-two. Purchasing negotiated with Voya Financial to raise the fixed rate from one percent to two percent, beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with the current crediting rate thereafter and a continued floor one percent. By raising this fixed rate by one percent, this will allow employees and our retirees a higher interest rate on their four fifty-seven deferred comp plan.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item ten is a consideration of a contract for hot mix services with Ford Construction Company.
Bids were received for hot mix, which we use in our maintenance of our city streets. Bids were sent out to thirteen vendors. We had three vendors submit for the bid. We recommend awarding this bid to Ford Construction Company as the best bid submitted, and the rate of cost will be ninety, ninety dollars per ton delivered and seventy-five per ton picked up.
Any questions from council?
So moved.
Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
All right. Item eleven is consideration of a contract with NASPO Body Armor and Ballistic Resistant Protective Products. It's participating addendum with Safari Land LLC.
The information you have in your packet is for a contract with ballistic vest for the police department. After checking with the state, they do not currently have a contract for these goods. With the approval from the State Procurement Office, they recommended we reach out to NASPO. We will enter a contract through a participating addendum with Safari Land. Safari Land Bulletproof Vest meets the specifications of our police department. Using this NASPO co-op, we will be able to get the ballistic vest at a cheaper cost and save us procurement bedtime of getting the vest here.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, from a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item twelve is consideration of a contract with Kenfolk Food LLC for their operation of a grill slash restaurant located at the farmer's market.
Proposals were received for labor materials for the operation of a grill slash restaurant located at the farmer's market. We sent out proposals to twenty-nine vendors. We recommend awarding this proposal to Kenfolk Food as the only proposal received. And within your packet, you can see the menu that they provided with their proposal, and they spoke with us about some of the items and some of their goals this passing interview meeting.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item thirteen is consideration of a contract with Thompson and Smith LLC for police aviation insurance coverage.
Proposals were received for police aviation insurance coverage. This proposal is for liability insurance for our rotor wing aircraft located at McKellar Sipes Airport. Proposals were sent out to nineteen vendors. We received three proposals. An evaluation team comprised of Stacy Stone with Risk, Councilman Gary Pickens, Terry Hopper, and Stephen Overton with Police Aviation, Angelo with Purchasing Department. We recommend awarding to Thompson and Smith Insurance as the best proposal received.
Any questions?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item fourteen, consideration of a contract with Cisco Memphis LLC for Sportsplex concessions.
Bids were received for concessions for the Sportsplex. This bid includes different concession items needed at the Sportsplex. We sent out bids to three vendors, and we recommend awarding this bid to Cisco as the only bid received. The best bid was received at a cost of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. And within your packet, you'll see a breakdown of the individual item cost as part of their bid.
All right. Any questions from council?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. When do you think they'll be able to be up and running? How soon?
After this council, I'll be assigning a PO to it and getting that to Jason Compton, and we will be using their services ASAP since I know tournaments are rolling right now, and we'll be able to get this PO assigned, and they'll be able to use the vendor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item fifteen is consideration of a contract with Bubba Johnson Sand and Gravel LLC for fill dirt and fill sand services.
Bids were received for fill sand and fill dirt. This includes both the delivery and the pickup for the fill sand and fill dirt. We sent out bids to three vendors. We recommend awarding this to Bubba Johnson Sand and Gravel as the only bid received. This bid was received at a cost of, delivery will be eight point four two per unit, which would be a hundred and fifty-nine and ninety-eight cents per truckload. Picked up cost will be three point fifteen per unit and a truckload cost of fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. Sand and dirt, same, for both delivery and pickup.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any further, any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Item sixteen is approval of TDOT Local Government Guidelines.
Attached to this memo in your packet is a copy of the Local Government Guidelines Form I two. TDOT now requires the city formally adopt this policy for projects funded through it. We have been required to follow their procedures for a number of years, but now they're requesting just a formal approval of the council.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Item seventeen is consideration of memorandum of understanding between Jackson Madison County Equity Project and the City of Jackson. I have Lauren Kirk and Matthew Marshall and Obie Beard take the presentation.
Council, the MOU before you outlines the city's responsibilities in addition to the Jackson Madison County Equity Project for operating the Jackson Boxing Club program. Just like I noted in agenda review last week, the city does not have a formal role in this program at this time, but will be working towards establishing Police Athletic League to be more formal. So, the Jackson Madison County Equity Project will be subleasing the Bennett Center from the Delta Sorority, which we lease to right now for a dollar. So, the funding that they'll pay for that is in lieu of what they would normally get from event revenue and things like that in the gym. Our officers will be encouraged to participate in the program as mentors, and this program was recommended by the Anti-Poverty Task Force as a way to provide opportunities for youth, mentoring, build positive relationships with law enforcement. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Move the approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council?
Mr. Beard, we're here. I think we're almost across the finish line here. I'm excited about this program. I've shared that with you. I've shared that with the mayor. I've offered my help in any way that we can. I think this is exactly what- Hmm. Thank you, Siri.
But we think it's a good idea.
It's a, it's a great idea, and this, these are the type of programs that we need to be investing in in our community. I appreciate your work and the future work that you got ahead of you. There is a second.
Motion and a second. I wanted to thank our Risk Management Department, Legal Department, Police Department for the work that's gone in, and Jackson Madison County Equity Project's been several months of work to get this MOU correct, and we're here. So, thank you all. Any further discussion from council?
Thank you. Thank you, Delta Sigma Theta.
Yes.
To all parties in the sorority and corporate.
Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, consideration of committee and board appointments, Equalization Board, Sandra Carter to replace Rose Meriwether and Peggy Graves to replace Reggie Smith.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight zero. Motion passed, eight zero.
Keep Jackson Beautiful Board, Jill Taylor to replace Jenny Dimming and Summer Ferguson to fill an open position.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, eight zero.
Jackson Energy Authority Board, appoint Bill Kip to fulfill the unexpired term of Dennis Henderson and reappoint Monty Jones. So moved. You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, eight zero.
Number 19 is sale of surplus property.
This will be a housekeeping issue to correct a clerical error from a previous meeting where the council approved the sale of two pieces of surplus property. One at 111 Ness Street, the council approved $3,080. That was in error. That property was sold for $1,000. And the second one at 204 East King Street, the council approved $4,500 for the sales price. It was actually sold for $1,000. It was a clerical error. I want to correct that.
Any quick questions from counsel? What was, I'm sorry. Did I jump in front of someone?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
You said the prices was wrong, was the appraised value?
Well, from my understanding, and I've been researching this a little bit further to have a better understanding of this whole process. But that was the, what was viewed to be the market value of that property and the offer on sell surplus properties. Like you approved three at a previous meeting. One of those properties sold at the market value or what was believed to be the market value. The other two were sold at below market, so.
All right, any other questions from counsel? Is Mr. Phillips here?
I don't know.
He's working in the revenue office.
Present or not, I don't know.
He's in charge of surplus properties, correct? Oh, there he is, right there. Yeah, good morning, Mr. Phillips. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address the discrepancy in those.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. The original offer amount on these properties was lower than what was put forward to the council. It was based upon the worksheet showing the taxed appraised value. And many times we accept a lower than tax appraised value in order to get the properties back on our tax roll. These are properties that have been surplus. We've not received any taxes on it. We're maintaining those properties. So in some cases, we determine that if the offer amount is sufficient to cover some basic costs, then we'll go ahead and recommend or request that you approve it for a lower amount. Again, that gets it back on the tax roll for us. We start getting taxes that we haven't for years and we take it off our maintenance list.
Is your procedure to put these properties out to bid?
These properties are listed on our website and the offerers have an opportunity to view those, make an offer. Then we run an ad in the paper for 10 days by legal requirement.
Sure.
Allowing for a counter offerer to bid at least 10% more and so forth, so that we get the best offer out there. This process has been followed. There was no counter offers against these original offers. And so we recommended accepting it, to recommend to the council after we run that ad.
Okay, and this is just a clerical error?
Yeah, we just simply picked up the wrong amount. It was picked up, the worksheet includes what the tax appraised, the zone and so forth. All that information is on the worksheet that we send forth along with the offer. And the appraisal amount of the other amounts were picked up in error. It should have been the offer amount on that form. So we corrected that as far as our clerical process, so that we don't have multiple numbers on the page. We try to clear that going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. All right, is there any other questions?
These properties, the deals have been done, the properties have changed hands. We're going back to correct.
No, they did not change hands. It was, it was, it was put on pause last council because of the difference in the total amount.
It's been on pause and now we're correcting the number.
Yeah.
Then the deal will go down.
We're asking for them to be approved at the offered amount today. Then they will go to our attorney, the fees will be transferred to the new owner.
All right, any other questions from counsel? Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
We had two no's, okay. Motion passed, six yes, two no.
All right, thank you, Bobby and Sunny. Item 20, report recommendations from city attorney regarding anonymous ethics complaints.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Counsel.
Good morning.
I'm here today to discuss two anonymous ethics reports that filed through the Ethics Portal that the city has. That's something that was new to me when I was handed these. That was something that was adopted in response to the Controller's Report. And I think, Mr. Taylor, you were part of the group that suggested we needed to add a way to make these reports. Our city code, Chapter 4, deals with ethics. And Chapter 1.410 talks about ethics complaint. And there is a specific sub-paragraph, 2C, that says, "When a complaint of a violation of any provision of the chapter is lodged against a member of the municipality's governing body, the governing body shall either determine the complaint has merit, determine the complaint does not have merit, or determine that the complaint has sufficient merit to warrant further investigations." Now, when it says governing body, someone from the governing body has to be the person against whom a complaint is made. And the governing body has to be the entity that evaluates and acts on those complaints. There is no substitute. It also says that the investigation of everything else is done by the city attorney. And I think typically, unless it was a relative or something, I'd be comfortable doing that. But in this case, since I have an attorney-client relationship with the mayor and with the council and deal with each of you on a confidential basis, I don't feel comfortable being the one that would conduct the investigation. So what I've done is I'm the messenger. I've received these two complaints. And y'all have received two complaints. Mr. Taylor is the one who is the subject of the complaints. And y'all got, I think he sent an email responding to the complaints. So I see, Ms. Wallace, do you have a copy?
Oh, yes, sir. They were just asking me to speak into the mic.
That's the first time I've heard that in a while. I apologize. So, as the messenger from the anonymous portal about these two complaints, it is my legal opinion, and more important than that is Teresa Luna's legal opinion, that y'all have three options. One, someone can make a motion. A second, and if it passed, if this had no merit, that would end discussion. Two, someone could make a motion that the complaints have merit. And then you'd move on to the second, what do we do about it? And the third, someone could make a motion, we need an investigation. Each of these items lead us down different paths. One of them has to pass by a majority vote in this council. So you have what I've been given. You have what Mr. Taylor has filed in response. And so the question now is up to you. What do you, what do you want to do? I can tell you how to do any of those three, but I can't, I shouldn't, and I won't tell you what to do. It's not my job.
I have a question, Louis. In our packet, there is a, I guess you could say, a report from the Ethical Advocate. Can you tell us where that came from?
I can. The Ethical Advocate is an independent agency that serves as a clearinghouse.
Okay.
So people can go online, hit a link, and they're put through boxes. And it looks like you can tell what the boxes were and what the responses were in the reports. And while they probably could identify the email of whoever made the report, they're pledged to protect that and to maintain its secrecy. And so the city can't tell. I don't know, and I don't think anyone, absent some sort of computer crime, could do that.
So if they're making, I'm sorry. So if they're making a recommendation, this would come from their organization? Or would it come from the person that filed the complaint?
The recommendation, there is no recommendation. They're just the reporting agency. Counsel, you remember when we got the Comptel's Report initially, back in 2020? There was some questions that counsel had and we had about how to report, you know, ethics violations, fraud, waste and abuse. And you all voted to enter into a contract with Ethical Advocate to provide an online reporting source that will allow the complainants and the reporters to remain anonymous. And so this is where this is generated from.
So this is a reporting service, basically?
Yeah, this is just to file the complaint anonymously. And the, what to do about the complaint, in far as the code goes, with a legislative governing body comes back to the governing body to make the determination.
Councilman Brooks, I would compare it to a complaint box where you make anonymous complaints in the box. It's just a digital version of that anonymity.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
If we look at and say it had merit, what would be our next step if we chose that option?
Well, then I would go to the violations. And Section 411 talks about any elected official or appointed member of a separate municipal board, blah, 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 subject to punishment as provided by the municipal charter or other applicable law, and in addition, subject to censure by the governing body. So I think this body would be able to do a censure. It doesn't list anything else. I haven't gone through and researched what the applicable law or what the options are. But I think censure would be at least one.
And what would those remedies be if, if the council voted to have an investigation?
Well, if, if the council voted to have an investigation, then I would say, fine, I can't do it. I think it would be an ethical violation for me to pretend I can be objective in investigating any one of you. And so I would make a recommendation to the council for someone who is outside my firm, probably outside of Jackson, who would come in, review what there is to review, review Mr. Taylor's statements, and go wherever, you know, the query leads them and make a report.
Mr. Chairman, one question, I think, and Attorney Cobb, this is new to all of us. And I think in our discussion, we don't remember-
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, for you as well. But procedurally, we're here today, we're discussing this, deliberating on it. But could you walk us through the timeline of when these claims are made? And then what happens in that window of time until it hits the agenda?
These filings were made with Ethical Advocate in late February and early March. I received copies of them in March. When I received them, I looked at the applicable state law. I looked at the applicable local ordinances and tried to find what other entities, states, cities, how they handle those. Since there was no path to follow, we sort of had to blaze a trail. And I asked Teresa Luna, that I do a many situations like this, to work with me and let's see what the best way to handle it. I didn't think I needed to be reporting it to the person subject to the investigation before I reported to everyone. I didn't want to report it to everyone until I felt like I had determined what is the proper short-term, long-term ramifications. Because the way we do this time is probably going to create the model for doing it the next time, if there is one. So that's what we did. It took us a little while to feel comfortable how we handled it. When we decided to release it, we, I let Mr. Taylor know and I sent out information to everyone else, or I think the merit it, I can't remember that. Since that time, the Jackson son has asked for a copy of open record request. I provided that for them in less than 24 hours, so that's been released to the media.
Thank you.
If I, if I could speak to this?
Sure.
In the email that I provided to everybody, I spoke a little bit about this process. And as Mr. Cobb has alluded, a lot of this came out of some of the work that I was doing early on with fraud, waste and abuse and anonymous reporting. I think it's important, one, that this community has the full faith and confidence of all of us up here in the way that we conduct our business. I think I've demonstrated that over the last three years where I've really given myself to the city to do the best that I can do to move this city forward. I think it's unfortunate that we're here today and that y'all are put in this situation. The two, the two particular instances that are being addressed is, one is the housing study that I've been pushing for. This is something that the chamber has pushed for as well. I think it's very important for our community to be able to plan for growth and development. Unplanned growth and development is not good for this community. With, with Blue Oval City coming, being in, with the knowledge that I have and the educational background that I have, I know that these types of studies are excellent tools for our planning department to use. It, the complainant made the allegation that I was in this for myself, to use for myself. I've provided you with, with a, our own study that we had commissioned, a private study commissioned back in January for the multifamily apartment that we are currently developing. We paid out of our pocket for that. We, developers don't need the city study. The city needs the study to help control development. And I think that's very important to understand the differences in that. The second, the, the second complaint that's made is about my father owning property out near where the, out near Georgia Pacific is potentially to be located. That, the particular piece of property never crossed my mind. It's, it's a mile away from the subject site. And, and, you know, to me, when I'm sitting up here, I'm, I'm taking on the responsibility of a city councilman. I, I don't let anything else ever guide that decision. Today, just, and, and just to kind of bring to the forefront, today, we've had other city councilmen do a similar thing to that. And we, we, I think it's a good opportunity for us. And, and we'll go in whatever direction the council decides. But I think this should be a wake-up call for all of us. It's a wake-up call for me to broaden the disclosures that I make. I've tried to do that today. But I think we all should start practicing that. It doesn't take a long line to connect us. This is a small community and we're all very active in it. And it doesn't take a long line to connect us to different things. Ultimately, this isn't about the conflict of, a conflict of interest with myself. It's about the perception of that. And we need to do everything that we can. And I pledge moving forward that I'll do everything that I can to make sure that that perception is mitigated to the maximum extent. I'll continue to do what I've done today, even as awkward as it is at times. This is unfortunate that I have to go through this, but if it betters the city, so be it.
Thank you, Councilman. If I may, Mayor, to, to the council, the Tennessee Code requires municipalities to adopt a code of ethics by ordinance. The ordinance restrictions must apply to boards and this council. The Ethics Act passed by the General Assembly requires that personal interests that affect or appear to affect, affect or appear to affect the actions of municipal officials must be disclosed. It includes any financial, ownership or employment interest of an official in a business or entity the municipality does business with, regulates or supervises. It also includes these interests of listed family members of the officials. The code requires an official with responsibility to devote, to disclose any of his or her personal interests that might affect his or her discretion before the vote, so that they appear in the minutes. And as we've seen today and has been exhibited several times, we have witnessed how now this has become an important prophylactic directive. In my opinion, while the ordinance requires the council to determine whether a complaint has merit, I'm uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable making that determination. has merit, I'm uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable making that determination. I believe that all complaints have merit and should be investigated. In order for this administration and council to move forward and prepare for the Blue Oval, we must have the public trust. As Councilman Taylor said, full faith and confidence is of the utmost importance. And ultimately, we are not here to evaluate the worth or services of Councilman Taylor. That's for the voters. However, in the spirit of openness, transparency and accountability, I ask my brothers and sisters to join me in a vote for an investigation. This would also prove that the council is unbiased, non-complicit and shows no favoritism. And an investigation would also protect the due process rights of the accused. With that, Mayor, I would make a motion that the council consider that this complaint has merit and that there should be an investigation.
Thank you, Councilman Brooks. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
To clarify the motion, is that, so that's investigation, I guess there's two, right? There's merit.
Well, well-
Investigation and punishment and then-
If you have an investigation, it has to have merit. It has to have merit.
So we can, yeah, he's saying investigation, not that it has merit, punishment immediately.
Well, no, he is, he's stating that-
It has merit.
It has to have sufficient merit as per-
Right.
The complaint itself has merit.
The language of the ordinance is, if the governing body determines that a complaint warrants further investigation, it shall authorize investigation. That's one road. The other one is a determination that it does have merit, which is affirmative. So I think what I heard you say is we want to go down the path of having an investigation.
That's correct.
All sides stories, not just-
Yes.
That's the question I was-
And that would be an objective arbiter that would hear that and would hear, again, all sides and provide a bit more information than we have. And, you know, obviously, Councilman Taylor would be able to provide more information as well.
If I could interpret what you're saying, if the governing body determines a complaint warrants further investigation, it shall authorize investigation, that's what your motion is?
That's what my motion.
And Attorney Cobb, can you, I know it's the first time for all of us, you touched on it earlier, you would not be the one to conduct said investigation.
I would not.
And then how does that play out? Timeline, involvement of this body? I think it's, you know, important for us to understand what that looks like.
Well, the decision on approving who I suggest would be up to the body.
Okay.
And-
It'll be next month.
Right.
Would be the presentation of the-
We wouldn't have to make that decision today. I guess we couldn't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was gonna try not to say anything, but this caught my attention when we were listening to our audit report. On slide 15, the comptroller, we have already been brought up on about transparency. I am gonna say I'm struggling with this. I think everyone realizes that we shouldn't be policing fellow council members, but I am also struggling with the fact that this has been brought to us and with transparency and where we've been in the past, it is concerning to me. I'm just gonna leave it at that, that that caught my attention when I was reviewing the audit report on slide 15 about transparency in front of the comptroller's office.
All right, any further discussion from council? I'd like to say one more thing, if possible. Yes. As I stated in what I sent to you, I think we need to really look at this process. I'm not saying that, you guys can decide which way you want to go on this, but we really need to look at this process. It sets a dangerous precedent, in my opinion, the potential for frivolous issues, as I stated today. You know, I'm aware of the same scenario just happening today. And so if we're gonna go down this road, it's gonna get repetitive. It's gonna get, it's gonna become an issue. And I would hope that we could look at this process. One, the notification period. I had to call Mr. Cobb to find out about this. And, and when, and talking to Mr. Cobb, I had to request the specific allegations so I could know what to address. I think it's more for political smearing and frivolousness, and I hope y'all consider that as we move forward. I know that I will. The results of an investigation or not, however, which way you choose.
Thank you, Councilman.
都会根据他们报告的方式，如何汇报，如何回应， timetable would be extremely helpful.
Yes.
And I didn't think right now was the time to start making those, but it-
I don't think it is either. I don't think it is either, but I think there should be an opportunity, one, to have those in a timely manner, to be notified of this. I went through another council meeting without having this perspective. You know, and there's no formal process to, for response on this either. This is the process.
Moving forward with it today, I think my concern is that we're setting that precedent. You know, once that's out there. To Councilman Brooks' comment, I agree. There has to be this in place. We have to be open. It's good that it's anonymous, so that if there is merit, that person can't seek, you know, revenge on that person. We need that. But the procedural way that we got here, I think, is concerning. And our job is to decide one of those three options. So I don't want to get off from that, but by holding this and making a decision today, I think we are legitimizing the initial process, the in-between time when a claim is made until it hits the agenda. And I think that's concerning. It should be for all of us, I believe.
And while I have similar concerns, this is a process that we have. And this is a process we have today. I am truly willing to work with anyone to look at this, because I, again, you know, can only put myself in this position. But, you know, I would just say I would welcome an investigation, personally, if it were me, to ultimately clear my name. So that means that's just a personal-
Completely transparent.
Personal thing. But again, this is our process. And, but moving forward, we do probably need to make some changes.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Okay, five yes, two no, one abstain.
All right, item 21, consideration of budget amendments less than $10,000. That's disclosure. No vote required. Item 22, consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, eight zero.
No further business. Council meeting adjourned.